We call the committee to hold to order, please.
Lennon?
Here.
Boywood?
Here.
Liza?
Here.
Faith?
Here.
Pabon?
Here.
Ruiz, Aronella, Carmichael?
Here.
I'll make a motion to excuse Alderman, Aronella, and Ruiz.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, second and by Faith, to excuse Alderman, Ruiz, and Aronella. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Before we start our speakers tonight, if you looked at the Pillars communication, apparently it just came in, they are having their 100 year anniversary on July 29th. They've communicated with the police department of blocking Clinton Avenue from 34th to Windsor from 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM. Michael, what did you need to add to that?
You know, we went back and forth with them, and we explained to them that we had to get it to the clerk's office to get on council floor. Our emails to them initially went to spam is what she related to us. So she got them to us yesterday, I got them in as soon as we could.
All right, well, we could do a straw poll vote to allow them to block the street, and if you guys are okay with that, then we'll carry it out. So, on a straw poll vote, is everybody okay with blocking Clinton Avenue from 34th to Windsor from 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM on July 29th? Marge?
Oh, you want me to call the roll?
Yeah, please.
Oh, all right. Lennon?
Yes.
Boywood?
Yes.
Liza?
Yes.
Faith?
Yes.
Pabon?
Yes.
Carmichael?
Yes.
Okay, so you can relate to them fine, and make sure that Schiller's aware of what's going on.
I just sent Schiller a message with this flyer.
Okay. So we have two speakers tonight, and first we're going to introduce Mr. Anthony Tyndall.
Actually, I'm Kevin Kuhn, I'm not Anthony Tyndall.
Okay. Kevin Kuhn, from the Forest Preserve District of Cook County, who's going to show us what the forest preserve has to offer. Sir, it's all yours.
Right, thank you so much. I really want to say I appreciate, thank you, Mayor, and everybody present for this opportunity. I'm going to talk about the history of the preserves, all the preserves have to offer the residents of Cook County today, and where we're going. Is my voice coming through okay?
Yes.
Claudia, thanks for the IT setup, I really appreciate it. The last minute stuff is very helpful. By quick show of hands, how many of you have ever spent time recently, in the last year, in the preserves at a picnic, hiking, fishing? Okay, about half the people here, that's great, that's awesome. Do, 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 I'm sorry. "The Forests Preserve stayed open during COVID, we're very proud of that. Some of you might be among the unprecedented number of people who visited the Forests Preserves during the COVID pandemic. By some counts, we have seen twice as many people on our trails than typical. Throughout the world, people saw just how important public spaces are. The Forests Preserve worked hard to be open and available to the public during COVID. We still are. First job is always the safety of the public and our staff, but within that, we tried to be a resource for people to be outside their homes and to be out in nature. Throughout the pandemic, we kept our trails and preserves open. And amenities that did need to close, like our nature centers or indoor stuff, we opened as soon as public health guidelines told us it was safe. The Forests Preserves of Cook County exist because more than 100 years ago, people had a great idea. Local visionaries saw the importance of protecting and preserving our natural land. In the 1800s, Cook County, at a very early stage of European settlement, is on the left." Okay, notice all the green. "You can see that urban development shown in red was just beginning. By the 1900s, Chicago was the fastest growing city in America. Advocates recognized that without setting aside land as a green space, we would lose natural open space in Cook County. I am so glad they did. As you can see from the 2015 map, in one of the most densely populated counties in America, Los Angeles County has 10 million, Cook County is second with 5 million. There are very few undeveloped areas. And take a look at those shapes, that is essentially a map of the Forests Preserves. We are islands of nature in a sea of human development. Today, the Forests Reserve of Cook County covers nearly 70,000 acres, that's 11% of the county's total area. The Forests Preserves are in every part of Cook County, most are outside the city, but there are some preserves in Chicago, too. The Illinois State Legislature formed the Forests District of Cook County in 1914, so we're over 100 years old. We are in a separate unit of government, connected to but distinct from Cook County. The original message of the mission of the Forests Reserve of Cook County is still our guide today, to protect and preserve public open spaces in its natural state, for the education, pleasure, and recreation of the public. So we are a bit different than a park district, we often get compared to, but we are different. We are more like a state park or a national park, a place to go and experience nature. The Forests Preserves are a place where native plants and animals thrive. They offer visitors options for adventure and fun, a key word, fun. If you're going to take care of something, you gotta have fun in there, okay? And they make us and our communities healthier. Thousands of types of plants and animals depend on the natural areas in the Forests Reserve of Cook County. This is a picture of a North American river roder. This little guy returned to the region after 100 years, thanks to restored healthy environments. This is a success story. Cook County is the most ecologically diverse county in all of Illinois. That means basically there are a lot of different plants and animals. The Forests Preserves protect woodlands, wetlands, prairies, and savannas. These lands are each an ecosystem, think of them as a neighborhood, with specific plants, animals, insects, and other organisms that live together. Ensuring these ecosystems are healthy means wildlife can not only survive but thrive. More than 100 threatened and endangered species live in the Forests Preserves. Today, you can see species that were almost gone, or had disappeared entirely from our region, living once again in the Forests. Yes, you can see bald eagles in the Forests Reserve of Cook County. Restoration methods. A big reason these animals have returned is because of our ecological restoration work. Most people think that nature can take care of itself, but nature in urban areas needs our help to remain healthy. We used to think that it was enough to protect the land and set it aside. No. Roadways, pollution, invasive plants, the changing climate, the changing climate is very real. All contribute to the degradation of ecosystems. Our restoration work is guided by our Natural and Cultural Resources Master Plan. We wrote this in conjunction with the University of Illinois Prairie Research Institute. So today, more than 14,000 acres are under active management, restoration, more than twice as much as a decade ago. The work includes everything from helping native plants by using prescribed fires, you may see the prescribed fire sign out on the highways next to the Forests Preserves, removing old drain tiles from what had been agricultural fields, to clearing brush and planting native seeds by volunteers and staff. Restoration work is also done by award-winning Conservation Corps programs, run with partners like Audubon Great Lakes and Friends of the Forest Reserve. These programs provide paid, hands-on experiences across Cook County's diverse communities. Summer and year-round programs mobilize more than 300 participants each year to restore natural areas. Two-thirds of the participants are high school youth, three-quarters are people of color. For many participants, it's their first paycheck and their first time extended time in nature. Within all these great places, there are so many ways to have a great time, fun, remember that? Most Cook County residents are a 20- to 30-minute car ride away from a Forest Reserve to explore. The Forests Preserves also provide year-round programming and activities for individuals, families, and groups. Create your own adventure. We have more than 350 miles of trails that take you through all sorts of local terrain and different ecosystems. Paved trails for runners, cyclists, myself, Love It, families, even cross-country skiers. Unpaved trails that provide options for walkers, hikers, mountain bikers, and equestrians, people that are on the horses. Camping, in 2015, we opened five campgrounds. These are very popular, and there's more every year. You can camp in a cabin, a bunkhouse, a tent, or a RV. I spent a night in a bunkhouse, they're very comfortable, you can get one air-conditioned. We know that many city people have never camped, but we make it easy. We rent tents, sleeping bags, flashlights, and more. We manage more than 40 bodies of water for recreational fishing. We also have launches along rivers and some of our lakes to bring out a canoe or kayak. You can rent a boat from one of our boating centers. The Forests Preserves has its own nature centers throughout the preserves, each one offering displays and exhibits on local nature, trails on the grounds, opportunities to see wild animals like snakes, turtles, and hawks up close. Naturalists, nature educators, on-site to explore the exhibits. Trailside Museum of Natural History, maybe you've been there, that's in River Forest, or Little Red Schoolhouse Nature Center in Willow Springs, those are the two closest to this building tonight. The nature centers host school groups and other groups year-round. They also host programs and events, more than 1,500 annual events, nearly all free. Owl prowel hike, solstice bonfire, how to paint or photograph nature, art tree lessons. During the pandemic, the preserves began offering virtual events via Zoom and Facebook Live, too. Now we offer a mix of those. Among our crown jewels are our closest partners, Brookfield Zoo, not very far from Berwyn here, and the Chicago Botanical Garden. Few people realize the zoo and gardens are on Forests Preserve land, and that we help support these institutions. They share our mission to protect and educate about the natural world. These public-private partnerships include research, together, work on outreach and programs for the public. Forests Preserves are a great place to get healthy. That can mean exercise, from a trail run to nearly 300 limestone stairs at Swallow Cliff Woods. If you've not done the stairs at Swallow Cliff Woods, I challenge you, if it's not easy, I did it. It's like, whoa, that is not easy, but it's a very, very popular place. Mental health, lower stress and increase your peace of mind on a slow walk. Being in nature. Serious research has shown that the benefits of just spending time in nature include lower blood pressure, increased brain activity, and improved sleep quality. The Forests Preserves also keeps our communities healthy. Our lands are the largest clean air resource in the region, cleansing and cooling, cooling on a day like today, cooling the air we breathe. Trees filter airborne pollutants and reduce conditions that cause asthma, a leading public health issue. Our lands also mitigate against global warming. Our preserves absorb as much greenhouse gas annually as is produced by more than 330,000 cars. Remember, we are 11% of Cook County, one in every 10 acres is Forests Preserves. Clean water. The preserves help keep our waters clean, too. The Forests Reserve manages nearly 15,000 acres of regulatory floodplain on major streams and rivers. Hundreds of millions of gallons of rainwater fall in Forests Preserves annually. Thus, water is absorbed and released slowly in natural land, not flowing directly from roofs, roads, and parking lots. That protects against flooding in our homes and businesses. The water that reaches the watershed is cleaner because it's been filtered, rather than picking up oil and waste from asphalt and concrete. So, numbers. Annual environmental impact. All this means that even without ever stepping in a Forests Reserve of Cook County residence, you're still benefiting from the preserves each year. Add up these benefits, and they provide about $470 million in annual environmental impact. This doesn't even include all the other benefits, like protecting wildlife or supporting biodiversity. The Forests Preserves helps our community health with our impact on Cook County's economy, too. $115 million in sales every year includes the direct and indirect impact of purchases. $71 million in earnings includes the direct and indirect jobs because the Forests Preserves are open. An estimated $215 million in value from hiking, fishing, birding, photography. Add it up, and the Forests Preserves adds $400 million in economic benefits to Cook County every year. As you can see, we've been working hard in the Forests Preserves. We have a deep commitment to our responsibility to serve the stewards of the land and taxpayer resources that fund our work. When we reached our 100 year anniversary a few years ago, we worked with partners to create an ambitious blueprint for the future. Our Next Century Conservation Plan now frames all our work, connecting people to nature through outdoor activities and programs. That includes ensuring everyone is welcome to the Forests Preserves. Restoring 30,000 acres of land into good health, showcasing the Forests Preserves' economic value, making sure the preserves are transparent and good stewards of taxpayer money. But we're reaching a limit on what we can accomplish, we are structurally underfunded for our mission. So I need to show a hands again, please? Who's ever bought two cups of coffee in the last month? I have, okay? The amount of one or two cups of coffee a month is the cost per household today, to protect 70,000 acres and everything I've talked about. So that's less than 1% of a Cook County property tax bill goes to the Forests Preserves. In many municipalities, it's less than half a percent. The average homeowner in Cook County pays $3 to $4 per month toward the Forests Preserves. If you own property in Cook County, you pay less, approximately $3 to $4 per month for the Forests Preserves. Advocates for the Forests Preserves have proposed a referendum to bring in more resources for the Forests Preserves. Our Board of Commissioners has voted to put it on the ballot for the November 2022 election. The Forests Preserves will be on the ballot November 2022. Come visit! We hope to see you there. Use the preserves to be active, playful, or wrestle, go outside and experience nature, visit our interactive map or our website to find new places to go and things to do. There's always some site you can go to to get away from civilization. Check out our events page to see what kind of activities we're leading, sign up for our newsletter, and follow us on social media. If you want to support the preserves, we'd certainly appreciate it. You can donate your time by becoming a volunteer in your local preserve. It's a great way to get exercise, meet people, and be out in nature. We have lots of different kinds of opportunities. I specifically work with the Volunteer Resource Center from a team of about 10 of us, and we support thousands of volunteers. It could be once a year, it could be every week. Some people take a new job on in their retirement as volunteers, so it's highly variable, what the volunteers are doing, and all very valuable. The Forests Reserve Foundation accepts donations to support the mission of the Forests Preserves for both the foundation and volunteering. Learn more at our website. Or become an advocate. Tell your friends and family about all the opportunities available to Cook County residents, and I'm grateful for this opportunity tonight. So, now I'd like to ask for another quick show of hands, after hearing all about the Forests. How many of you will plan to make a trip out there maybe in the next few months? All right, all right, okay. Thank you for your time today, appreciate it.
On the website that you provided here, do you have principal maps? Because I remember years ago, we had, Forests Reserve had delivered maps, I believe the City Hall, that were nice printouts of all the Forests Preserves in Cook County.
Right, I have a box. I'm gonna push, I leave the box with Claudia?
Beautiful, okay.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm glad you brought that up. Bells? Okay, great, thanks guys.
Questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, thanks guys, sir, we appreciate it.
So, next on the agenda, we have Anthony Loretto, coordinator of our Born Emergency Management Agency. Last meeting, I inform especially the newly elected officials that we have to qualify certain levels for NIMS. He's here to explain what that's all about, answer any questions you might have.
Okay, well, I sent out a letter to everybody about NIMS, and first I'd like to explain what NIMS is. The National Incident Management System. And it's also a component of ICS, which is Incident Command. These are things that we use here in the city of Berwyn, along with all, most all municipalities. It's done in such a way that it's more structured for your first responders and for your public officials, so that we all speak the same language. That's the main objective of this. One of the things that NIMS was born out of, was actually born out of the Coast Guard, they've been using this system for over 100 years. They're the original writers of the NIMS program. 9/11 was a wake-up call to everybody. One of the biggest problems you had during 9/11 was the agencies didn't talk to each other. You had the board authorities, different radio band than the fire department. Police departments were broken up into different bands. They couldn't talk to each other, and it was chaos. There was no one central command to run everything and to say, this is how things are going to be done. Luckily, it was still, everything came out pretty good, because they finally did establish it through the fire department, they established an incident command system, and it came out pretty good afterwards. NIMS, in our situation here in Berwyn, the real application of it is, we need to make sure that the first responders all work in the same manner. We need to make sure that our public officials understand what we are doing as first responders. I say that "we" because I'm a retired firefighter, I've been here for 30 years, on the fire department, retired now for 11, have been doing emergency management ever since. We want everybody to understand what it is that we're doing, and you understand that we all come out with one voice. One of the biggest problems you see in a lot of situations is, you may get the chief of police on the news, and he'll say one thing, and then you get the mayor up there, and that person will say another thing, and then you get an alderman or congressman will go out there and say a different, it's not the same story. We need to have a united front, and we all have to say the same thing, so that the people of our community understand that it's one message, and we don't freelance. We're not allowed to freelance in the fire service, we just don't go off and do what we want to do. I know the police department is not allowed to freelance, they can't just do what they want to do. It's a chain of command, and it has to be followed. One of the other things that we do is, we have, anytime there's a program here in the city of Berwyn, such as Oktoberfest, a car show, parades, you name it, we have to write what's called an incident, I'm running a blank. An operations plan. An IAP, Incident Action Plan. There we go. So the Incident Action Plan is designed as a general knowledge, so that everybody knows what the assignments are. Fire department knows what the police department's doing, the police department knows what emergency management's doing, we all, and it's all one big plan. We also plan for the disaster, the what-ifs. What if it happens, is what we plan for. On my side of it, I plan with, I wrote an emergency action plan for the city of Berwyn, it's actually called an all-hazard plan. It's about 200-some pages, it's on file at the clerk's office. It's a plan that says, what if? What if there's a train derailment? What if there's a nuclear disaster? What if there's a, can't plan for everything, but there's a guidelines, and these guidelines are based on the rules and regulations and the procedures of both police and fire. So off of those procedures, we write this plan, and it's a plan that everybody follows. So when does it get put in place? Well, the plan gets put in place when the president or the governor declares an emergency. That's when the plan gets put in place. Obviously, we're in a pandemic, that's a declared emergency. We have a blizzard, that's a declared emergency, if the governor declares it. Major incidents like that, a tornado that would hit. So what we do in emergency management is, we have, we compile all the documentation of what happened during that operational period. Through that, I can then go forward, and if it's a declared emergency, we can prove ourselves to FEMA and get our federal money in. Why is it important for you to have this program? If we are not a NIMS compliant community, I can't apply for that stuff. It also goes for grants. Police department relies heavily on the grant money we get from FEMA, or from the federal, or from the state, ILEAS, and all the other, IEMA, sorry, IEMA. They rely heavily on that. So before a fund is released, let's say for a training program, they're going to see who's NIMS compliant. Who of you, who of all the fire and police, Public Works, anybody here who's a vital role, who's considered a first responder, who's NIMS certified? If we have blanks in there, they can say, we're not giving you the grant. Or they give you the grant, and then they do an audit. And if the audit shows that I wasn't telling the truth, that we don't have everybody NIMS compliant, they can ask for the money back. Those are some of the things that can happen if we're not NIMS compliant. So far, this community has remained NIMS compliant almost 100%. During my tenure doing this job, every school district, north, south, and some of the parochial schools, the high school, were all trained NIMS compliant. The basic framework, the NIMS 100, 700, and 800. Some of us have went on even further. Everybody who's in the command staff of the police department, the command staff of the fire department, and I'm even honored to say that even the mayor has gone through the highest level of training in Texas, all provided by FEMA grants, no cost to us directly here in the city of Berwyn, all provided through grants, so that we've gone through the highest level of Incident Command training. And believe me, it's grueling four days. But we've done that. Police officers get to go to other FEMA training, that includes the pandemic, police and fire, excuse me, that includes pandemic, nuclear disaster, rail disaster, I'm forgetting one, nuclear, and debris management. These are all the classes that are at the highest level of training. We've gone through most of them, all paid for because we are NIMS compliant. When I put that report together, which I will do in November, I indicate what our plans are, I have to indicate that our current emergency operations plan is current, and I have to prove that we do IAPs for every event. Do they come and look at it? Not directly. But Lord help us if we don't have that plan on file and something happens. Lord help us if we don't have NIMS certifications for everybody, they can audit us and say, no grant, no money.
Now, we've gone so far as to not just have our elected, and this started, actually, we had elected officials start to be NIMS compliant, probably going back about 15, 20 years?
Under Mayor O'Connor?
Yeah.
Was the first one.
He actually started it to get us all NIMS compliant. And we've gone so far as to even have many of our department heads to be NIMS compliant because of the roles that they may have to play in some type of incident that may occur. You heard us talk here about how Unified Command made decisions during the pandemic, reviewing what the governor passed down and what we decided to come out with. That is underneath the framework of the NIMS certification. That's what Unified Command was all about. We incorporate the parties that are necessary. Marge was with us, because she was with the Health District. It's very important that we had somebody from the Health District with us on Unified Command during that pandemic. So we will incorporate, we had the school people here, because they had to do remote learning, or however they were going to proceed. So that's what that's all about. If we don't have those certifications, like Tony said, we can lose out on federal dollars in an incident. People guessed about the recent flood. The governor never declared a disaster, so we could not apply for FEMA money. But back in 2010, was it Ruth? 2010, the governor did declare a disaster in the state of Illinois for flooding, and we did get, on one set, we got money for both the city and residents, the second set, I believe only residents got it. But we have to apply for that, but if we're not NIM compliant, NIMS compliant, we won't get it.
We also got it for the blizzard when that was declared.
For the blizzard, yes.
But again, that's all record-keeping, and I probably should have shown you this, but in the mayor's office, because we use the entire second floor here as our command center, there's a book in there of every single order, every single meeting, every single, everything that we did for a year and a half is in that book. So if we ever get audited on that level, we can produce it and say, here you go, we did it, and it's all documented. And by the way, the only people that could be in part of the Incident Command, you have to be trained.
Right.
As it comes down to, as I've said to many, many people as I taught this class, I've said, when the time comes, it's not, it's not if it comes, it's when it comes. I don't have time to train you in NIMS command. I don't have time to do it, so learn it now. And the last group I taught was at the library, and they ended up being part of our biggest volunteer group, a very integral part when we did the testing. So, they get it, they understood then and there, now we get it. When that train derails here on the track, we don't have time to teach it to you, we don't have time to, we're running skeleton crews here, we don't have time to teach this stuff at that point. This framework, this NIMS 100, 700, and 800, will teach you the language, will teach you what it is you need to know. It's a basic, it's not a catch-all, it's not going to turn you into an emergency manager, but you'll understand when we come out with directives, or we come out with orders, or plan, you'll understand where we're coming from.
One of the most important things I learned in Texas was that, just because I'm the mayor, I'm not necessarily the one in charge. The person who's in charge is the person who knows more about what's going on in that incident than anybody else. That's who steps up. We did that at the police station. One of our officers was in charge. The chief and I sat by his side and listened to orders from him with respect to what we should be doing during the time that we had all the violence going around towns, because he was military-trained, he's been in those incidents, and he had a better mindset with respect to what needed to be done. So we sat back and listened to him. That was one of the most important things I learned. Put the guy who knows the most in charge.
During the blizzard, Public Works was the lead.
Public Works, correct.
We were all there, we supported everything, but we had to hear it from Public Works, what do we need to do? And then, we always act, in this community, we've always acted as a unified command. And that's where the top, the top people don't make a single decision. And that's where the, the top, the top people don't make a single decis- don't make the decisions individually. They make a single division, the decision for the group.
Amongst the group. So, again, most of us have the certifications, but I'm more appealing to the newer elected officials. Get that one hundred, seven hundred, they're online, am I correct, Anthony?
Yeah, so, the one thing I'd like to explain about that, it's in my letter, um, the, the very most important thing, when you get on, or you're gonna have to register, and they're gonna give you an SID, Student Identification Number. When you get that number, write it down, put it away, write it down, put it away, save it in several different spots if you don't have it. Because if you lose your ID number, you're dealing with the federal government trying to get your records. And, believe me, it is a pain, it, it's, it's a very difficult process to get your records again. So, get your SID, and you can, then you'll have it, and make sure you keep it, and then every class you take, there'll be a record of it. When you're done with the class, make sure that the clerk gets a copy of it, uh, the clerk keeps all the records, and I suggest you keep a copy for yourself. In all walks of life now, NIMS is becoming very important. School teachers, it's part of their curriculum as a school teacher, to have one hundred, seven hundred, and eight hundred. That's part of their curriculum. It's, it's very important, and, and by the way, there's a hundred and ninety-six classes on this website that you can take. Anything from how to handle, uh, animals during a disaster. What do we do with people that need, that are handicapped? What do we do for historic preservation? When you read the different classes that are available for anybody on there, and anybody can take these classes, you don't have to be an elected official. The, the civilian side of that is ready.gov, and we've all seen the commercials for ready.gov. Make a plan, that's what I, make a plan. Be able to fi- figure out what it is you're gonna need. Don't wait till the incident happens. Plan for it. That's what we do. Any questions? Yes?
So, you're talking about the one hundred number, seven hundred number, is there a recertification process?
Nope. No. Yeah, once you get it, you're good. Here's what I always recommended. Um, most of the other elected officials, probably with the exception of Bob, because he still has to get refresher classes through the FD. There's no harm, and you don't have to take the class, maybe just read it through and do it again. You know, you, there's no refresher, but they do come out with one hundred A, one hundred B, one hundred C, as time goes on, they rewrite it. I mean, they've been doing this now for twenty years, uh, do these, these classes. So, they kinda, you know, adapt to the times, or what they've learned, this, this worked, this doesn't work. So, there may be new ones come out. But, you can always go back to the NIMS and see what, see what's new there, and there may be a class that's just of a special interest to you. I don't know. You know, some people have that, uh, I know when, when Lori Thielen was in our community, she, she was all excited that there was a historic preservation class. She took it. So, it's, it's open to anybody. I, I would say civilian-wise though, it's ready.gov, that's more geared towards the, this is geared more to decision makers.
Question, any other questions?
Yeah, if you already have the certificate, just turn it in. Some jobs require that you have NIM certification, I don't know. But, some jo- so, if you already have taken the class, just make sure that we have a copy at the clerk's office for an audit.
Okay, yes, go ahead.
Sure.
Besides the requirements, what is, when these scenarios, I want to talk about expertise, meaning, what's in the decision, uh, just in general, uh, what are, what is on that kind of board?
No. The, the command decides who the PIO, the, uh, the Public Information Officer is. And that's why I say one voice. What is your role as an alderman? Your role is to understand, and then as we come out with things, to either ask for clarification, so you can go back to your, your, your wards and talk about it, and, and to basically carry the message again to a more local level. Not everybody's on the internet, not everybody's gonna get all the messages that we send out, uh, I, I mean, that's just a fact. We do the reverse nine-one-one and all that, but not everybody's gonna get it. Elected aldermen are supposed to be in touch with the neighborhoods. So, you can hear the message and understand the language that we're giving you. That's the key. Uh, when we say, a lot of times, we'll, we'll, we'll talk, we're supposed to talk in plain language, but, you know, we use the command, you know, ICS. We're not gonna keep saying incidents in command, you know, we're, we're gonna use different phrases. But, to understand the system is more important, and understanding chain of command is probably the biggest part of that. Understanding that if you're not the subject expert, don't make it up. And don't believe the internet every time. The internet is not always gonna be accurate.
But, that's another avenue that, one of the alderman could possibly, you, you might get a certification in something that none of us know anything about.
Right.
And you would be pushed then in Unified Command because that incident concerns that certification that you receive.
Absolutely. If we, if I know somebody has an expertise, yep, we bring them in. During the pandemic, we used one of our firemen who is a pandemic expert for, not only for this department, but he's on the state team. He was at every command meeting, clarifying the language of the, of the, the orders that were given to us through the federal or state government.
Any other questions? Okay.
I hope to get the certificates as soon as possible. I know it's a little grueling, each class is about four hours. Sorry about that, I didn't make the class, but, uh, I, I'd like to get them as soon as possible so that when I fill out my reports, I'm accurate.
That's in November.
I, I do, I, it usually takes me the whole month in November to get everything done.
So, let's get those done, and if you do have any questions, just let us know.
Just give me a call, absolutely. I'll answer, i- even if you get hung up on the, on the test, the, the questions in the, in the, uh, in the program, give me a call, I'll, I'll help you through it.
All right, thanks, Tony.
Okay.
I have nothing else for Committee of the Whole. Uh, we took the straw poll vote, so, um, do I have a motion to adjourn the Committee of the Whole?
So, move. Second.
Let in by fate, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. See you back at eight o'clock. Don't forget, the YouTube is still running.
It's amazing, right? Yeah, you can. But, it's tried, it's tried and true methods that throughout the country, doesn't mean it's always gonna work for you directly.
Thanks. Are you vaccinated? No, you can. We're gonna all learn a little bit soon, right? These are your oath cards, um, and thank you for serving on the zoning board, so you're...
I'm ready.
Hey, hello, sir. Joseph.
Joseph.
Uh, write it down and put it somewhere, and then write it down.
I'll walk you over to my office.
What's going on with you, my dear? About thirty-one years.
Hey, come on up. You're kicking off.
I'm done, I'm done, I worked, I worked, I worked the night for two months and that was... I just saw you come to the state of Pennsylvania. That's why we had to do it three days. Then the call, I...
You're perfectly... Like, cripple them.
You know, I told the test that it was mine, and what I was shocked, if I called that court, and I'm only there for...
What are you doing? Huh? You feel the sky's not...
I know. How's Kevin?
Tony, I'll let you know when he says come forward.
Bring you the big ones.
My gosh.
Are you?
I want to get on my bike.
I didn't want to come this long.
That's the person. How are you? Congratulations. Awesome. I love your outfits. Thank you, oh my God, thank you. I almost thought it was safe, thank you.
Oh.
I'm hurrying to see you.
Hey, man.
Well, but no, that's why it should be me.
Well, it should be... Oh, you're doing, you know, correct. Let me get by you. So, fall is quiet tonight, huh?
Yeah.
I gotta grab my scissors.
Hi.
All right. I guess we'll get it tomorrow. Yeah, we sang, I can just sing.
Yeah, one day at a time. How are you here? It's been okay.
Fall wouldn't hurt.
Good, good. Oh, I thought it was a cast. No, I thought it was a cast. We, we, no, no.
Oh, oh, no, that's... It freezes, freezes up.
It's a good idea, huh? Get sure this is what you think, but...
So, I heard there was a... What, so they were just kind of checking, so? It was almost like a little, a little, you know? That's cool, so I could check if I got it. They had a chafita, like, sort of a little mix, or map parkers. Oh, yeah, yeah. No, beautiful, just a... Or from the tax... See, I remember when I got my son, he waits on it. Now, chicken symbol going. Is it fun? I'm still, I'm still in the middle of the... I had their coat, like, this is... This one. Oh, nice, huh? Thank you. Yeah. I'm glad you're coming. Yeah.
You're gonna make the motion for J seven, right?
Do I have to explicitly say how I voted on it, or is...
No, you can, you can just say, yeah, uh, that you like to, um, make a motion to correct the minutes at J seven to show the count is five, I...
Sixty?
Sixty, yeah. That it was, it was a roll call vote, and it was sixty-two. There, perfect.
Clerk Paul, can we call the council meeting to order, please?
Oops. Alderman Lennon?
Here.
Alderman Waywood?
Here.
Alderman Leja?
Here.
Alderman Fate?
Here.
Alderman Pabon?
Here.
Alderman Ruiz?
Here.
Alderman Aronella? Alderman Carmichael?
Here.
I'll make a motion to excuse Alderman Aronella?
Second.
Motion by, uh, Lennon, second by Fate, to excuse Alderman Aronella, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Can we all please rise for the pledge of allegiance, and please remain standing?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could all just keep on our thoughts and prayers, the men and women we have on the street tonight. Thank you. If anybody wishes to address the open forum, please step forth to the speaking gate, state your name and address. Envy it from the audience. Alderman, anything for open forum? Hearing none, item C one, please.
Item C one, are the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting and regular city council meeting of July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one.
I'll make a motion to amend, uh, J seven to reflect the correct vote, uh, would be six-two, and it was on the, uh, call of the roll.
J two?
J seven.
I inadvertently wrote that it was a, uh, voice vote.
Okay, do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion by Carmichael, second by Pabon, to correct item J seven to the correct vote total, uh, call of the roll. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of both meetings, uh, including the amended minutes?
Uh, make a motion to approve, uh, both minutes, as well as the amended minutes.
Second.
Motion by Carmichael, second by Lennon, to approve the committee of the whole and the borough and council minutes as amended for July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item D one, please.
Item D one is a communication from Public Works Director Schiller, recommendation to award the twenty twenty-one roadway resurfacing project.
I'd like to make a motion that we concur with Director Schiller's recommendation to award the twenty twenty-one roadway resurfacing project to the second lowest bidder, Chicagoland paving contractors with a bid amount of one hundred and eighty-two thousand.
Second.
Motion by Ruiz, seconded by Fate, to concur with the recommendation of Director Schiller and award the twenty twenty-one roadway resurfacing project to the second lowest qualified bidder, Chicagoland paving contractors with a bid amount of one hundred and eighty-two thousand. All those in favor on the call of the roll.
Lennon?
Aye.
Waywood?
Aye.
Leja?
Aye.
Fate?
Aye.
Pabon?
Aye.
Ruiz?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Seven ayes, mayor.
Motion carried. Item D two, please.
Item D two is a communication from Library Director Tammy Shidi regarding the acceptance of RFID bid.
I will make a motion to accept the bid and enter into a contract with Envision, uh, Envisionware for our radio frequency identification project for the cost of sixty-one thousand, seven hundred, eighty-three dollars and eighteen cents. Fix the necessary signatures and send it, let's wait a passage.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, second by Ruiz, to concur with the recommendation, Director Shidi, and approve Envisionware as the RFID vendor for a cost of sixty-one thousand, seven hundred, eighty-three dollars and eighteen cents. Affix the necessary signatures, place it on its way to passage. All those in favor on the call of the roll.
Lennon?
Aye.
Waywood?
Aye.
Leja?
Aye.
Fate?
Aye.
Pabon?
Aye.
Ruiz?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Seven ayes, mayor.
Motion carried. Item F one, please.
Item F one is a proclamation honoring Eugene Wojcowski. Eugene Wojcowski, commonly known as Woj, by just about everyone in the city of Berwyn, from mayor on down, and whereas Woj's eligibility to become a member of the American Legion Commodore Berry Post Number Two Fifty-Six was through his honorable service in the Army during the Korean War, and whereas Woj has been a member of the American Legion Commodore Berry Post Number Two Fifty-Six for over fifty years, and whereas Woj has served as commander seven times, also working himself to commander of the American Legion Fifth District, and therefore, I, Mayor Robert J. Lovero and the Alderman of the city of Berwyn, would like to honor Eugene Woj Wojcowski for his dedication and commitment to the American Legion Commodore Berry Post Two Fifty-Six, and do hereby proclaim July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one, as Eugene Woj Wojcowski Day in the city of Berwyn, and further let it be proclaimed that a street sign will be installed on the corner of Clinton Avenue and Roosevelt Road, dedicated posthumously for his exemplariness. Entered upon the record city of Berwyn, twenty-seventh day of July, twenty twenty-one.
I will make a motion to adopt this proclamation, affix the necessary signatures, and send it on its way to passage.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, second by Fate, to adopt the proclamation, affix the necessary signatures, and place it on its way to passage. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, is John Marchand here? Okay, Marge, I'll get those, uh, after the next one, I'll get those to Commodore Berry. Item F two, please.
Item F two is a proclamation honoring Anna Collins Cirillo. Anna Collins Cirillo has been a member of the American Legion Commodore Berry Unit Women's Auxiliary for twenty-seven years, and whereas Anna's membership is through her father, William Collins, who served honorably during World War Two, and whereas Anna joined the auxiliary in nineteen ninety-six, and by nineteen ninety-eight, worked her way up to the office of president, and whereas Anna has been a bartender for the last twenty years, welcoming her veterans with a smiling face, great personality, and sometimes a loud voice, to convince the newcomers that they belong. And whereas Anna has taken the lead in organizing fundraising events, and therefore, I, Mayor Robert J. Lovero and the Alderman of the city of Berwyn, would like to honor Anna Collins Cirillo for her dedication and commitment to the American Legion Commodore Berry Post Women's Auxiliary in the city of Berwyn, and do hereby proclaim July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one, as Anna Collins Cirillo Day in the city of Berwyn. Let it be proclaimed that a street sign will be installed on the corner of Clinton Avenue and Roosevelt Road, dedicated posthumously for her exemplariness.
I will make a motion to adopt this proclamation, fix the necessary signatures, and send it on its way to passage.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, second by Fate, to adopt the proclamation, affix the necessary signatures, and place it on its way to passage. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Director Schiller? Uh, the signs have already been made by the post itself, so we don't have to worry about making the signs. And then I'll take those, Marge, and bring them to the post.
All right.
Okay? Item F three, please.
Item F three is a communication from the mayor regarding zoning, planning, and development commission reappointments.
Be my motion, mayor, to concur with your decision to reappoint Joe Kraska, Don Miller, Lance Molina, Kathy Norden, and Doug Walega to the Zoning, Planning, and Development Commission.
Second.
Motion by Fate, second by Ruiz, to concur with the recommendation of reappointing, uh, Joe Kraska, Don Miller, Lance Molina, Kathy Norden, and Douglas Walega to the Zoning, Planning, and Development Commission. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. If we would hold our seats on these until all the appointments have been made on the zoning, and then we'll call you all up at once to be sworn in by the clerk, okay? Uh, item F four, please.
Item F four is a communication from the mayor regarding zoning, planning, and Development Commission appointment.
Mayor, be my motion to concur with your decision to appoint Rick Morisi to the, uh, Planning, Zoning Commission, and thank, uh, Richard Bruin for his years of service.
Second.
Motion by Fate, seconded by Ruiz, to concur with the recommendation of appointing Mick, Rick Morisi to the, uh, Zoning, Planning, and Development Commission, and thank Richard Bruin for his years of service. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item F five, please.
F five is a communication from the mayor regarding zoning, planning, and Development Commission appointment.
Mayor, be my motion to concur with your decision to appoint Frank Rodriguez to the Building, Zoning, and Planning Commission, and thank Rosa, Rose, uh, La Pietra for her service.
Second.
Motion by Fate, seconded by Ruiz, to concur with the recommendation of appointing Frank Rodriguez to the Zoning, Planning, and Development Commission, and thanking Rosina La Pietra for her, uh, years of service. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Will all those that were just, uh, reappointed or appointed to the zoning board, please come up?
Please raise your right hands. Did you, Joe Kraska, Don Miller, Kathy Norden, Douglas Walega, Rick Morisi, and Frank Rodriguez, having been appointed or reappointed to the Zoning, Planning, and Development Commission in the city of Berwyn and the county of Capocorset, to soundly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois, and that you will all faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the city of Berwyn, zoning, planning, and development commission to the best of your abilities. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Hi, I'm Doug Walega.
Item J. 1 is a communication from City Attorney Bertucca regarding nineteen WC. 032-826.
I'll make a motion to authorize the settlement of one nine WC. 032-826 for the amount of one hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, seconded by Ruiz, to concur with the recommendation, as per the executive session of the council, to settle the workers' comp case as captioned in the amount of one hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. All those in favor on the call of the roll.
Lennon?
Aye.
Waywood?
Aye.
Leesha?
Aye.
Fate?
Aye.
Pabon?
Aye.
Ruiz?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Seven ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Item J. 2, please.
J. 2 is a communication from City Attorney Bertucca regarding twenty-one WC. 006-208.
I'll make a motion to authorize the settlement of twenty-one WC. 006-208 for the amount of one hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred dollars. Or twenty-one, I'm sorry, twenty-one, twenty-one thousand, four hundred dollars.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, seconded by Ruiz, to concur with the recommendation, as granted in executive session, and settle the workers' comp case as captioned in the amount of twenty-one thousand, four hundred. All those in favor on the call of the roll.
Lennon?
Aye.
Waywood?
Aye.
Leesha?
Aye.
Fate?
Aye.
Pabon?
Aye.
Ruiz?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Seven ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Item J. 3, please.
J. 3 is a communication from City Attorney Bertucca regarding eighteen WC. 032-920.
I'll make a motion to authorize the settlement of one eight WC. 032-90 for the amount of twenty thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty-four cents.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, seconded by Ruiz, to concur with the recommendation, as granted in the executive session, to settle the workers' comp case as captioned in the amount of twenty thousand dollars, four hundred and sixty-four point two four. All those in favor on the call of the roll.
Lennon?
Aye.
Waywood?
Aye.
Leesha?
Aye.
Fate?
Abstained.
Pabon?
Aye.
Ruiz?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Six ayes, Mayor, one abstention.
Motion carried. Item J. 4, please.
J. 4 is a communication from Police Chief Semaglia regarding engine replacement for the animal control vehicle.
I move that we concur with Police Chief Semaglia to purchase a replacement engine for our current animal control vehicle, which is a two thousand and eighteen Ford Transit Two-Fifty, whose engine stopped functioning after seventy-five thousand miles and it is now out of warranty. I also concur that we contract with the lowest bidder, Macon Sons, located at six three 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 West Ogden Avenue in Berwyn, for a total cost of three thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars.
Second.
Motion by Leesha, seconded by Waywood, to concur with the recommendation of Chief of Police Semaglia and allow him to replace the engine for the animal control vehicle with the lowest quote from Macon Sons in the amount of three thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars. All those in favor on the call of the roll.
Lennon?
Aye.
Waywood?
Aye.
Leesha?
Aye.
Fate?
Aye.
Pabon?
Aye.
Ruiz?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Seven ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Item J. 5, please.
J. 5 is a communication from Police Chief Semaglia regarding emergency building repair.
I will make this motion, but first I would like to explain it. This is in reference to our celliports. A celliport is the garage where the police and sheriff's vehicles unload inmates at the jail. After the vehicle pulls in, the overhead door is closed, creating a secure environment for those in custody. They can then be safely removed from the vehicle and proceed into the booking area. I walked and examined this area myself. It is in very bad shape and has structural deficiencies. The walls, floors, and drains need immediate attention. Not only are the celliports in danger of more severe damage, but the basement underneath has been deteriorating due to rain, snow, sleet, and salt seeping down from the celliports into the rooms below, including a boiler room, causing erosion of the cinder block base and severe mold issues, forcing immediate action. So, I move that we concur with Police Chief Semaglia in waiving the formal bidding process and accept the lowest estimate from one of the four qualified vendors who all already inspected the damages, made recommendations, and offered estimates, and choose finishing touch cement and masonry for a total cost of twenty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars and begin work immediately, which will be financed through the Berwyn Police Department capital outlay, which has the funds to cover this expenditure.
Second.
Motion by Leesha, seconded by Fate, to concur with Chief of Police Semaglia, waive the bidding process, and allow him to contract with finishing touch cement and masonry in the amount of twenty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars for the emergency repairs to the celliport. All those in favor on the call of the roll.
Lennon?
Aye.
Waywood?
Aye.
Leesha?
Aye.
Fate?
Aye.
Pabon?
Aye.
Ruiz?
Nay.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Six ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Item J. 6, please.
J. 6 is a communication from City Administrator Siabagreen regarding bidding of power washing services.
I'll make a motion to approve, to publish a sealed bid notice, review the bids, and bring the recommendations for power washing services for city parking garage to a future council meeting for approval.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, seconded by Fate, to concur with the recommendation of City Administrator Green and allow her to publish a sealed bid notice, review the bids, and bring the recommendation for the garage, city's parking garage, power washing services. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J. 7, please.
J. 7 is a communication from police, I'm sorry, from the police and fire commissioners regarding the promotion of Chris Danisi.
I move that we accept as informational J. 7 from the police and fire commission.
Second.
Motion by Leesha, seconded by Lennon, to consider informational. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J. 8, please.
J. 8 is a communication from the police and fire commission regarding the promotion of Michael Gallagher.
I move that we accept as informational J. 8 from the police and fire commission.
Second.
Motion by Leesha, seconded by Lennon, to consider the communication informational. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J. 9, please.
J. 9 is a communication from the police and fire commission regarding the promotion of John Fitzpatrick.
I move that we accept as informational J. 9 from the police and fire commission.
Second.
Motion by Leesha, seconded by Lennon, to consider the communication informational. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J. 10, please.
J. 10 is a communication from the police and fire commission regarding the probationary paramedic firefighter Heather M. Johnson.
I move that we accept as informational J. 10 from the police and fire commission.
Second.
Motion by Leesha, seconded by Lennon, to consider the communication informational. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The consent agenda, please.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Lennon, seconded by Ruiz, to consider the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All demanded committee meetings. Alderman Lennon?
Call the chair.
Alderman Waywood?
Call the chair.
Alderman Leesha?
We have our third ward cleanup Saturday, August seventh, nine to eleven a.m. at Stanley and Oak Park Avenue, and also on August seventh, from twelve to six p.m. is the combined Veterans of Berwyn's Veteran Expo at Proxa Park. There will be over eighty-eight vendors, and they are expecting over five hundred people to show up, so let's all show up and help support our veterans and call the chair.
Alderman Fate?
Call the chair.
Alderman Pabon?
I'd just like to announce that starting in August, every third Tuesday of the month, I'll be holding my award meeting at Head Park at the Dan Studio, so just wanted to share that.
Alderman Ruiz?
I have a public works committee meeting on August tenth. Depending on cow, we'll be starting either at five-thirty or six.
Okay, Alderman Carmichael?
Call the chair, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Carmichael, seconded by Lennon, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you all.